Okay. I'll go rebuild the discussion.
You can see the way it comes out of the flats. I was back to the house, it's geared and ready to go. Cast is longer, lay up high in the holes and we're good to go.
Now it's working.
I don't know if you should have it.
Yeah, we've lost some people here.
Hey, you can start him.
All right. Welcome everybody to our Wednesday meeting. We will go ahead and get started with public works.
Good afternoon Commissioner Savannah Clement, Deputy Director for Public Services. We're actually going to let a public comment go first. So they don't have to wait for our 45 minute meeting. So I'll go ahead and let them come to the public podium if that's okay. Does that work?
Okay.
If you wanted to go with it, do you want to? And if you don't mind just introducing the, not department, but organization you're within your name to the board. Once you sit down.
Yeah, just make sure that green light on the microphone is on.
How much time is appropriate?
Whatever you want.
Take what you need.
Sleep bag outside.
I can get you a pillow.
Yeah, there's a, there's a button right there on that.
Right in the middle of the microphone, there's a push button right down.
Here we now.
Yep.
Yeah, my name is John Keatley. I'm one of the elected folks of the Kellits Conservation District. And like to offer some comments as background relative to, as I understand, it's going to be a public hearing next Tuesday on the Forest Practice Board Fish Buffer Rules on Non-Fish Streams. So today, like to spend a little bit of time talking about the proposed rule. With me is Darren Haupt, the manager of our small Kellits Conservation District. So the documents that I'm offering for background, I think you have in front of you. The entire rule, which is The entire rule, which is a big change from the existing forest practices. Near the back of that package is a new section on requiring fifty foot buffer strips on each side of non-fish bearing streams. And some more buffer strips and seeps that are adjacent to streams and a head wall and a complicated rule. But I would like to spend the time on the other handout that is data from the Washington Farm Forestry, it's got a label in the front of it. On page three of that background testimony that the state organization offered to the Forest Practice Board is a very key chart that is outlining part of the cost benefit analysis of the impact of this proposed law about forest practices. And that table is using data put together by the University of Washington. And it is a very, very onerous table in that there's impact to each and every Western Washington county. And this proposed rule only applies to Western Washington counties for non-fish bearing streams that are perennial in nature. So Kellis County is the third most impacted county on the west side of Washington with economic impact that you can see in the first column under Kellis County of three point five nine seven billion dollars of merchantable timber in a county. The second column is three point three five two is the amount of merchantable timber in the entire county on the private sector. These are private sector numbers that could be harvested if this rule is implemented. And the difference in that, there's two hundred and forty five million dollars worth of timber that would be left as permanent standing private property that could not be harvested. Two hundred and forty five million dollars worth of timber. The other column to the right is the percent change. And even that's a big number, six point eight percent of the standing inventory in a dollar value is required to be left in this rule. And the, the impact to the Kellis County, just in the five percent excise yield tax is a little over twelve million dollars of negative impact to the county on the five percent excise tax, that's part of the existing rule. And it lists the other counties, Lewis County is our neighboring to the north is the county with the most impact. Tying up private timber in the west side of Washington, partly because they're a very large county. And we are over eighty percent timber in our square miles of Kellis County. So Lewis County has more timber and actually has the number one ranking and, and the impact in terms of the dollar value in Lewis County is three hundred and seventy one million dollars. And a little higher percentage of their timber and eighteen million dollars to their revenue stream as part of the tax size tax. And the third handout that's there is one that I've talked with Commissioner Dole about. That's from the Industrial Forestry Association, the Washington Forest Protection Association. And I know that Commissioner Dole has that. So that's the impact to the large companies, which is, you can imagine is even greater than the small private tree foreigners of which I am and a lot of our Kellis County rural residents own timberland. So with that, I'd like to ask Darren if he'd like to help or manager that you both admit, see if he has any comments and would certainly be able to answer any easy questions.
Do you know why they're looking to impose this? Is it a, an economic thing is, what's the purpose? Have they said why they're wanting to, to do this to that buffer?
What's the justification?
What's the justification? Yeah.
Yeah, we both know why, but I'd like to ask Darren to talk about the description of a problem about why you need such an onerous rule.
Well, you can both be at the mic.
Hi, as you know, I'm Darren, I'm with the Kellis Conservation District and what's behind this? Politics. The purported rationale is there is a thought that leaving buffers on these little small headwater streams is going to decrease temperature in fish bearing water downstream. There's a five hundred and ninety page report that SEAMER did cooperative management, I can't remember the acronym, anyway. And basically what they found is, is what every temperature study I'm aware of found is there are numerous factors involved and it's very difficult to flesh those out. And so one of the big ones that jumped out to me is that when we leave buffers on these small headwater streams, they, they tend to blow down anyway. And when they do, it has continuing effects on canopy cover. And those continuing effects do result in increases in temperature in these small headwater streams. But in the non-harvest areas, no, no effect whatsoever. And so I guess coming out of that, the, the, the big concern is we may actually end up exacerbating the problem we're trying to address by leaving these buffers up there, letting them blow down. And the impacts of that can just cause bigger problems than what we had if we just left it alone or didn't buffer it at all. The other one that they, they came up with or were concerned about was the amount of surface versus subsurface flow. The fancy term is hyperic flow. And, and their study concluded that they need more study. They, they don't, they couldn't flesh out all of the issues. So that is a big concern of you'll read about in, in all of the documents that John's referencing is there's just a real lack of science backing the proposed rule. So we are here trying to encourage people to become more familiar with this proposal and to comment upon it. The WFFA and UW analysis of the economic impacts to Kellis County should be plenty to result in comment on this rule. That's a huge economic impact. So we have both Waukeaham and Kellis Conservation Districts have drafted a comment letter to the Forest Practices Board. And we're working on getting that finalized through our board members. And I did grab Kelly's card and I, I will ship it over and have her share that with, with you folks. And I, I guess that's all I, well, okay, we started. The other concern I have is counties are not represented on the Forest Practices Board right now. There is a seat for the Association of Counties. But there's three, three people that have been identified to fill that role. And the governor has not selected that individual. So I, I guess there are several areas where we would encourage your involvement in this is look over the information and by all means, comment. I, I think you have a two-page document just commenting on the economic impact to Kellis County. John didn't go into great depth beyond the, the dollar figure for the loss in revenue. But industry was at the hearing a week ago. And we're commenting on the loss of volume and that, that could result in shutting down of two mills. And so that loss is a couple thousand jobs in addition to the direct revenue impact. So the effects of this thing just keep going and going and going. And we just wanted to make sure Kellis County was aware of it and encourage you to put together some thought and put it on paper and comment on this thing. The other one, we will try to ferret out a little bit is on the WFPA document. There, there is a submit.
There you go, Xavier.
Hey, I turn them on.
Thought I had that muted. Apparently not. I better check the other phone now.
They need to put one of those signs on your door.
No cell phones.
Now, thanks.
I'm sorry.
So that, that's all we're here to do is just try to increase your awareness of this concern. It, it has numerous concerns associated with it, economics. And that, and that's the dollar figure that comes down to how much money does the county receive? All the way to the impact on jobs and all the impacts associated with that. The, there, there is, if you guys are interested in it, there, there are links available to, to take a look at the studies that SEAMER has put together for input into this rulemaking process. Again, the, the one I've looked at was five hundred and ninety one pages of pure scientific paper. Very, very difficult read. But guy can shift, can shift to the summary of the stream temperature effects and, and get a sense for the issues involved and the, the lack of ability for the study as designed to actually address those. And John, you got anything? Anyway, my recommendation is simply take a look at the materials and if you guys can, comment letter would be great. The other one would be through the Association of Counties, try to get a little pressure to get that seat on the Forest Practices Board filled. Do you want to talk a little bit about how this rule moved forward? With, with two abstaining and only nine voting.
The background of the meeting in June that the Forest Practice Board is made up of thirteen members, there was eleven present in the meeting that decided to go forward with this rule package. Of the eleven in the room, two agencies abstained. Department of Commerce, state agency, and the State Department of Agriculture did not vote on this huge rule as far as the impact. So that left nine people that did vote. There were five people that voted in favor of going forward with a formal rule process, a law, and four against. So very, very close vote whether to do this rule as written. But it is a complete legal amendment to the forest practice laws under the RCW. And the aggregate on this page that I refer to is one point eight billion dollars of timber in the west side of Washington that cannot be logged. And the estimate is it's going to be two hundred thousand acres that is tied up in these small buffer strips, fifty feet on each side. There's, it's complicated, but there is, in my view, perhaps as much damage to forest land outside of the buffer strip of higher logging costs, trying to harvest timber, most of which is mechanized in and around these buffer strips. You'd lay property lines for small private owners on top of the, the cutting unit. And you're going to create areas that are uneconomical to log as the creek meanders to a fish bearing creek on very small creeks that don't have any fish in them. So it's got a lot of impact. Our favorite tree, Douglas fir, most economical tree in our state, doesn't even grow well in partial shade. So if this buffer strip does not get blown down, you're going to lower the growth in the unit of forest land outside of the buffer zone. Along with some safety issues, very difficult to operate helicopters in there, whether you're fertilizing forest crops or perhaps herbicide away from the riparian zone. So it has impacts that are not evaluated. We, we have more answers, see if you have more questions.
Now, I, I don't have any questions. I, I researched it and looked into it. And it just seems to me typical Washington state government garbage. Very, I mean, honestly, when you look at what they're doing with fish and with game, very little science is actually applied to a lot of the stuff that's done. And it seems to be more agenda driven than anything. And that's disheartening.
In fact, I might comment, Darren and I have been searching through the literature pretty diligently for the last week or ten days. We see very little correlation between the stream water temperature in these small creeks downstream to more water, other tributaries coming in to a fish bearing stream. And then relating that, is there any difficulty with the salmatted salmon that live there today? And will this set of buffer strips create any more fish? We can't find it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I'm sure that, that when Chairman Dole returns, he's probably got it on his agenda to, to write a letter of, you know, in support of what you guys are doing.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your time.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you for the time you sit at, doing all the research on this.
Thank you.
Obviously, obviously you're well versed. I appreciate the education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Savannah.
Okay, thank you, guys. My one item that I have on my list is, I think, pretty easy, should be quick. A couple of weeks ago, the board at a public meeting okayed Mike Moss to act as signer to purchase, well, first negotiate and then purchase the property at River Suites. The title company is asking us for a written document that also states this. So I worked with Kelly this morning and Doug Jensen at the PA's office to draft a letter. It has all three signatures with Commissioner Dole being absent, we're okay having the two of you sign, as long as you're okay signing that. Did you already give, did you have a copy of that? Okay, awesome. So as long as the board is still okay, nothing has changed on purchase price or any of the terms. We're looking at a Monday close date, so that's August eleventh. So it's pretty exciting. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, we, sorry, yes, we'll need a motion.
Basically the motion stating that Mike Moss is authorized to
to give him permission to, okay.
Okay. See if I get this straight the first time. I make a motion for us to authorize Mike Moss to be the designated signer for the agreement regarding the River Suites facility. And for us to sign it, making that authorization.
Okay. So we have a motion. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And then I'm actually going to pass it off to Susan and Sean. Thank you.
Thank you, Savannah. You want to take that with you? Okay.
So, good afternoon, Susan, Eugenius, County Engineer. We're going to jump around between myself and Sean on this agenda. Excuse me, the first item is Hanson Road easement. So back in 1995, we came to an agreement with the owners of Hanson Road at that time to establish a turnaround at the end of the road. So the paperwork was never followed through. We have been working with the current owners for, but the turnaround was constructed. So we've been working with the current owners to obtain the easement that was agreed to at that time. We have finally obtained the perpetual road and utility easement for our turnaround at the end of the roadway. And so I was bringing that forth to get permission from the board for the chairman to sign this document.
I'm good with that. Okay. I don't know that we need a motion for that one, do we?
Where's our expert?
Off the way, I guess. Okay, we can move on to the next one.
So the next one, I received an email, so it's the Mount St. Helens Roundtable. So next week, Representative Glusencamp Perez is holding a roundtable about Mount St. Helens' long-term impacts on downstream communities. And I wanted to get some direction to see if the board was interested in a board member attending or for myself to attend. It is a close-to-the-press roundtable that she's looking for local people to come and explain to her the long-term impacts.
I think we should definitely have somebody from the board, and you go also. I personally think two of us is fine. Yeah, I don't have a problem. When is that?
So it is next Tuesday from 2:30 to 3:30. I'll forward the email to Kelly. Put it on my calendar, and then you guys can just let me know it's here in town, it's in Longview, so. All right.
Kelly, do we have to have a, a motion made in order to have authorization for Rick to sign the Hanson Road?
Hey, it's not going to hurt.
So just go ahead and have one, okay.
Yes, she can keep it till we come, it's not a pressing, pressing project. So we can wait for him when he gets back to sign it.
I, I do think as far as the attendance of that, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Dahl, but he is definitely the one that's most versed on everything that's gone on with that. And I think it would be a good one for him to attend if he can, but I'll let him make that decision.
So I will forward the email I received from her staff and to Kelly and Commissioner Dahl, so we can get that set up. Then motion for easement.
Well, I move that we authorize the chairman to sign the Hanson Road easement.
Okay, there's been a motion. Any discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
So the next item is a, this is an interesting, Susan thought she'd share. So we're working on the Garlock Road Fish Culvert. And so in mid-July, right after the fish window opened, in order to work in the streams, you have to block net it up and defish the water. So we received a report from the consultant that did the defishing, and I was actually quite surprised on the number of aquatic organisms that were removed. So it's approximately 250 feet of stream isolated. So within that 250 feet of stream, they removed about 4,000 aquatic organisms. Of those, there were over 2,000 lamprey, small ones, one to six inches, 345 coho of two to three inches, 10 chinook, about three inches in size, and 40 cutthroats of three to eight inches. So I just wanted to share that because I found it interesting of how many creatures there were in 250 feet of stream and that we really do have the target species of coho and chinook in that stream that we're working on. So I just wanted to share that with the board. I thought it was interesting to receive that report.
That's awesome numbers for a 250-foot stretch of Garlock.
Yes.
Where was, how far up is that?
So it's quite a ways away from the Columbia because it's Arkansas Creek, then it becomes Delameter Creek. So, and then it's up there, and there's quite a bit of habitat above there. And we have two additional projects scheduled on Delameter Creek in the upcoming years to keep working the way up the stream to make that fish passable as far up as we can get it. So it's very interesting.
It, it is, and the way, the way I look at that is, is that with the way that it currently is, are we expecting that number to increase in that 250-foot stretch of river? Because that's a lot of, that's a lot of animals that are already in there. So whatever's there seems to be working as it is, but that's just me, so.
But we'll, we'll see how it goes in the, in the future. See what else can make it up there.
Do we do this kind of a study after the project's done?
Do we fish count? No, we don't fish count currently. I mean, if, if it's something of interest to the board, we can certainly hire somebody to go out and count fish.
Well, no, I'm specifically on a project, when we're doing a major project to replace a culvert with a, with a 20-foot bridge or what have you, do we ever go back to see if our project was effective or if we made it worse for the fish?
So I can, I can speak to that, having just been on a two-and-a-half-hour conference call with the Fish Recovery Board. So the, the way that they determine what projects they're going to take on has to do with the percentage of blockage per fish passage that is blocked based on how easily a six-inch salmonid can move up or down stream from that. That's how they determine it, that's it. So if it's a, if it's a 60% blockage, they're going to put a higher priority on that than, say, one that's only 30% blocked. And when the fish passage is, is put in, the assumption is just made that it improved the numbers of fish because it's no longer 60% blocked. So there isn't anything that goes back from the fish recovery standpoint that we go back and monitor the increase in the fish. It's just based on the percentage of the flow that is blocked for a six-inch salmon up and down the creek. Once that has been removed, it's just assumed that it is.
I'm hearing you tell me what the reasoning for the project is, but I don't hear that we're ever doing anything to prove that the project had a value.
We don't. There isn't.
Crap, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just assumed that because the blockage is gone, it's going to be, it opened up the upstream from the blockage.
I can tell you that our Eric Creek project last year, we, we removed it late because we were a little behind, so we removed it late in the fall. And as soon as they removed the stream diversion, the inspector reported he saw salmon going up that creek, which was 100% blockage beforehand. So I don't know how many, we never did anything besides his visual, hey, look, there really is salmon going up that stream where they couldn't have gotten through before.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just an assumption that removing the blockage makes it better.
You know what assumptions are, right?
I absolutely do.
Yeah, it was capital letter.
Especially what's what my geometry teacher always told me.
Moving right along.
Next item we have on here is called Grant Funds Garbage Disposal. So I wanted to take a chance to talk with y'all today about Camp Hope, Alabama Street Encampment over there. Little history, back in 2021, we received direction from the board to fund part of that through our LSWIFA grants. We funded that through June of 2025. The new grant did not have room in it to continue funding that. So we're looking for some direction from the board if we want to continue to fund that up our local funds or excuse ourselves from that. We've paid one-half of the garbage disposal from that site.
And at what cost?
Currently, it's about $1,000 a month. In 2021, it varied quite a bit from 1,000 to $6,000 bills. We came back to the board in December of '21 and asked for what the cap should be on that. We got direction about $1,500 monthly, so we have stayed under that. But the funding source for it has gone away.
So we weren't billing Longview for that before then? Longview wasn't picking up the tab on that?
We were paying Waste Control directly for half of that disposal cost.
Half of it?
Mm-hmm.
So the other half was Longview?
Correct.
And so they voiced any opinion about this at all?
It was all different staff that requested it in that day.
Those numbers that you just quoted, that was our portion of it?
So a little more history. Prior to us taking it, us being Public Works, from November of 2020 to June of 2021, there was a COVID emergency grant through the Health Department. And then when that expired, that's when it transitioned to our grant.
You know, given the history and the story behind that whole situation, when you said grant funds and garbage disposal, it sounds like a book, the name of a book. Grant funds and garbage disposal.
He did have it titled something else, and I changed it, so he can, you can blame me on that. He had it like Alabama Street garbage.
Yeah.
I just wanted to jump in a little bit. This can be a hot topic of sorts. I think today what Sean and we are asking for is just some, maybe some direction moving forward, not today. Waiting maybe for Commissioner Dahl to come back and just to kind of notify you guys that that funding has dried up. If we are to continue to pay, we need to either pull it out of a different fund or get maybe different grant funds. There have been other ones in the past. You mentioned the COVID one, the one that was coming out was LSWIFA, which is an ecology grant that helps pay for some of our hazardous waste material, one of them being this garbage disposal. So no decisions necessarily today, just really wanted to float it to you guys so you guys were aware that this is coming and we'll have to do something.
How was Longview paying for theirs? Their portion?
I am not sure.
Unknown, yeah.
And right now, because Camp Hope's got their RFP out, right? Because they're, they're looking for somebody to take that over. It expires, the current contract expires in November.
I'm not sure that that sounds very correct. I did read in the paper that the Salvation Army is not pursuing it. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Salvation Army is not going to pursue that, I'm aware of that. here we are in August, September, October, November. What, what funds are we opt, can we have an option to pull that money out of?
So for August, we'd be currently paying it out of the Solid Waste Fund.
Uh, yes, I don't, at this point, I'm not opposed to extending it till November and see where this goes.
And you're saying it's between $1,000 and $6,000?
So that was in the early years. We have had a cap of 1,500. For the last 18 months, it's been about $1,000.
Okay. So we're talking four grand if we extend it? What happens to the garbage if we don't? Just out of, I just, just a question.
I would assume they would build a city of Longview.
I would, I would assume that Longview's going to have to pick it up. What's your thoughts? Well, we can just back away from it. Let's see, Longview pick it up before Mike can see how that.
For a little bit.
Yeah, I want to get on your radar.
But thank you for the update and making us aware that that's coming up. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on saying anything on that.
I don't, I don't want to continue it, given your last comment, but just for some background, when this was first brought to the county, we were in limbo a little bit as a staff as to how to even pay for it because it's not our bill.
Yeah.
Technically, you know, and so there was a lot of, you know, politics going on as far as whose responsibility it was. And, and the agreement kind of that was made was what Sean's mentioned, that we were willing to pay or that the board approved us able to pay. And then the funding piece was kind of just came about with the LSWIFA opportunity, which was that grant opportunity. But we were kind of on the fence of how we were going to pay for it then, you know, until that came up. So that's just a little background, and we're kind of, we're just back in that same situation. So we can also, if it's helpful for the board, maybe research some other grant opportunities. I'm guessing with a lot of the recent changes, there won't be a ton or if any. So, but maybe we can work on some other information just to get to the board to help.
Yeah.
Is the city of Longview aware, aware of our situation with the money running out?
We haven't talked to the city of Longview. I don't know if they're even aware that we pay half anymore.
Yeah, I think it would be worth a conversation to have with them. I'm just going to go and see what my initial thought was, and then I can give a little bit more thought to it in consideration later. My issue with it is, it's, it's, if we move forward and we're going to have a financial obligation involved in that situation, I feel like we need to have a say in what goes on. As opposed to, you guys go ahead and decide what you're going to decide, and then we'll pick up the tab. I'm not okay with that. And to this point, we, I, we have had communications with Longview about what's going on and what's taking place. We're obviously not going to decide, you know, through their process and their RFP, who it is that they're going to decide to, to run that moving forward. But if we're going to pick up the tab, I feel like we should have a say in how things are done over there. That's my initial reaction. To this point, in every conversation I've had with Jen, she has been, they've been receptive to working together, which is what we want. We want to be able to work together with our municipalities instead of working against them. But I don't want to just sign off on something to say, yeah, we'll pick up the tab on whatever goes on.
Well, that's why if we do, I want a deadline on it, and especially right now, stop it when that RFP. Because if that camp goes away, I want it, I want us to go away. And even if it doesn't, I would like us to have a say when it gets renewed.
I can put out just a recommendation if the board would like a staff to try to set up a meeting with the city of Longview. Let them know we've notified the board, and we can do that and provide some feedback to the board, hopefully, maybe next week, depending on how quickly we can get a meeting going.
Yeah, and I, and I'm sure Longview'd be up for that too, because to this point, they've been, like I said, very amicable and willing to work with us on whatever we can, and we want to help. But I also, it's not an open-ended tab. I, I think that if, if we're going to use county funds under the situ, the situation that we're currently in with our budgets, we need, I feel like we should have a say in how this is going to go down.
Okay, man.
Thank you.
Next on the list is a vehicle request. So one of our pickup trucks, number 5919, it's a 2018 F-150 with about 145,000 miles on it. It is one of our road supervisor trucks. The, the engine decided to stop working. Very technical term here. So we're looking at replacing it with a Ford Maverick. We would have asked for this for the replacement cycle in 2026. Due to the nature of it not running anymore, we figured we'd ask ahead of time, get ahead of that. It would be about a 45 thou, excuse me, a $40,000 request for the new vehicle, a fitting of lights, things of that nature.
Forty-five, or $40,000 more than what is currently budgeted for vehicles? Is that what the request?
The, the request would be for the new vehicle itself at $40,000, yeah. It was not budgeted for this year.
Got it.
From a replacement cycle, it would have been asked for in 2026.
So is this, is the length of, what typically, how long do we keep our vehicle until they die? Like in this case?
We thought we could have eked a few more months out of it. It had 145,000 miles. It was coming to end of life. You know, for our road supervisors, there's, there's not a lot of stop and go. It's a lot of drive time, a lot of long miles, because as you've seen, they cover wide areas. So it's not a, a hard drive on it. Usually, we expect to steal a bit more mileage out of this. This was one of the EcoBoost motors that have some issues around that. So we didn't expect a, a $10,000 replacement would be worthy if we were going to be asking for replacement of it soon anyways.
What, what, what year was the truck?
It's a 2018.
Okay.
And the Maverick is a smaller, more gas-efficient, okay.
Four-wheel drive?
Yes, sir, uh, all-wheel drive.
All-wheel drive.
All-wheel drive, yeah. I'm good.
I'm good with it.
Thank you.
So the next two items are, excuse me, to put on your radar, um, there are also going to be requests for letters. Uh, so last week, like last Friday, they released the Spirit Lake Outflow Safety Improvement Project Draft Environmental Impact Statement. So this is the document minus the appendices. So, um, the comments are due on October thirtieth. So I was going to start diving into it, bring you guys a summary of what's in here, and probably a recommended comment letter based on a discussion that we have on what is included in here. So I just wanted to make you aware that that is going to be coming in the next month and a half, probably. Uh, the second one is a more short, short-term, short-time turnaround. So the U.S. Department of Transportation is, has put out a request for information from transportation, um, providers, local government, state government, and tribes about the, um, existing surface transportation authorization. So the bill expires in September of twenty twenty-six, and they're asking us to provide information on how the current surface transportation program benefits us. This is our STP funding that we use to fund a lot of our road projects. So they're looking at us, uh, comments on how we think the program can be approved by accelerating delivery. What opportunities, um, do we think need to be added? What needs to be kept the same? So I'm going to be going through this information, working with the engineering staff on some of our likes, dislikes, and where we think there are gaps in the program. Um, and bringing that back to you guys for a discussion and a decision on if that's going to come from the board or the, from the Public Works Director. But that one will come quickly because the comment period ends on the twentieth of August. So that one, you'll see quicker, um, with our comments on how we think we should move forward with that.
Susan, real quick, going back to the tunnel. Are they just, i- is this just something that they're going to measure the flow, the outgo of the tunnel? Or are they actually looking at reboring it and opening it up? Does it say what the, what the plan is?
I have not gotten into it deep enough to know what they're, because they had all those different criterias that they were doing, and I don't know what their final conclusion was. I haven't even made it all the way through the executive summary.
I kind of glanced at it, and there, there's, it gives a couple, three options that either boring a new tunnel or trying to clean this one out and, and realign it after the fault shift has, has made it not a smooth surface anymore. So, but yeah, it's just got multiple options in there, no decisions at this point.
And did I, I did see a report, unless I, I don't think I dreamt this, but that the, when they did the inspection of the retention dam, that it's still up to par and doing its job?
As far as I know, the retention dam is still up, and there's no.
Oh, yeah. I'm pretty damn certain it is. I'm just wondering if, that the stability of it has been, uh, if the integrity of the dam, you know, if it's, if it's been compromised at all.
Has there been a report that shows what the?
Thought that there was.
I haven't seen a.
I, I haven't seen a report, but I can reach out to the Corps to see if there's an SRS dam inspection report.
I, I've been watching, trying to see if there was a, a report after the study, and I haven't seen the results of the study.
Well, maybe that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking is, I remember there was a study that was done.
Right.
Uh, to, to test the integrity of it, but I, I didn't ever remember seeing anything that said that it was still.
I don't think it was the sediment retention structure. It was actually a sediment dam up at Coldwater, right? That they were going to go, going to, uh, bore and find.
Find out what they, yes.
What the stability of that structure.
That's what I'm wondering if, if these are correlated.
It might be buried in this report or in one of the appendices. So I will have more information as I read. So the final item we have on the, uh, agenda is, um, no, they're mine. Um, I wanted to, uh, provide a little more clarity on, uh, our conversation that we had about the striping after we chip seal. So this is a stick and stomp. Literally, there's adhesive on the bottom. You pull off the paper, you put it down, um, and step on it to make sure you get a good seal. So before we chip seal, we go down the center line and the fog line, white on the fog line, yellow in the center line. It's perpendicular to the road. Then we'll oil and chip seal over it, and there's little reflective strips here, but there's also a plastic cover. So when they oil it, the oil sticks to the plastic cover. When they come and broom, this is literally stapled on. This is the fact that they told me I didn't know, which was true. So when they broom it, they'll come up and they sweep it, and this plastic cover gets ripped off because it's held on with a office-level staple. So then the reflective tape is now revealed, and you should be able to see these as you go down the road. Um, these will stay in place. We'll, we'll go and we stripe around them. They generally get knocked off with plows and people crossing the center line, but they are not something that we go and time-consumingly remove. So that is how these work. Um, just wanted to bring one, show you guys, uh, how it works, and ask if you'd like me to run through it with the public since we talked about it this week. Or just bring it and pull it on.
I don't think it would hurt to review it with the public, but I guess what's the estimated timeline between the time they stick that to the road and then we broom it off?
So they'll stick it to the road, uh, they broom them off. Generally, they broom off after they chip seal within a week to a week and a half.
Okay.
Um, so it's, um, depends on what day of the week they chip seal the road, what day, the, the following week, they're back out sweeping. So if they sweep, chip seal on a Monday, it sits longer than if they chip seal on a Thursday.
Good.
So just a little interest for people.
A little show and tell never hurts.
No, it doesn't. So that's all we had, if y'all, uh, unless you had stuff for us.
I don't think I have anything.
I'm good.
All right.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see if we have any public comments. I don't see any. Okay, we are good to adjourn.